Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Very good. The next action item pertains to the University's Office of Veterans Warfare and Military Program. This office supports over 700 military affiliated students and estimates 200 military connected faculty in staff. The University of Connecticut consistently goes above and beyond state and federal requirements and has been recognized at the national level for our support program. The action item is to update the 2017 Choice Act Resolution, which the board approved in December of 2017. The 2017 resolution administratively updated the 2015 resolution, implying changes in federal law. The law is expanded in scope of the Veterans Choice Act with benefits used on the 30th of U.S.D. Chapter 31, a program that is an occasional recuparation for disabled veterans. Veterans using educational assistance under Chapter 31 live in Connecticut while attending the University of Connecticut regardless of their permanent record now must be charged tuition pending state approval. Approving this update will ensure the University's compliance with current federal law. The last action item is to rename the Department of Human Development and Family Studies to Human Development and Family Sciences called Global Arts and Sciences. Renaming the department is resulting in the renaming of National Markets, Commerce and Arts and Doctor of Philosophy from Human Development and Family Studies to Human Development and Family Sciences. The interdisciplinary field of human development and family studies and science is evolving over time for the increasing incorporation of biological constructs and metrics, in fact, the programs of research and overall accomplishment of disciplines apart from the life sciences. The name change will benefit the student sample in the science aspect of the discipline to potential employers.
I'm going to take both of those items together then. They have a motion and a second to recommend the approval of the updated 2017 Veterans Choice Act and renaming of the Human Development and Family Studies.
I'd like to make my motion.
All right. Your Family Studies to Human Development and Family Sciences. I'm asking for motion and a second.
I'd like to move that.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion? Is there any discussion, any questions before we go down both these matters? No? All right. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Pose. All right. Motion carries.
Very good. I have a few informational items. The first regarding academic program inventory. The Office of Higher Education contains inventory approved academic programs offered by public and independent colleges in the universities in Connecticut. Those listings are available to the general public via their website. We are updating the inventory to reflect the change in the CIP code for the Doctor of Philosophy and Natural Resources from 3.0201 to 3.0101. The next two informational items pertain to the University's Faculty Consulting Program. Each year, two reports are generated out of the consulting program and shared with board of trustees. The first report is the University of Connecticut Consulting Program Fiscal Year 2018 Annual Report. The report provides a summary of the program and performance numbers at stores, regional campuses, and UConn health campus. By state statute, the consulting programs audit by the internal audit office each year, and those audit files are then allocated and reported. The second report is the report on the University of Connecticut's compliance with Connecticut General Statute 184R faculty consulting programs issued by faculty consulting purposes. The faculty consulting oversight committee is responsible for monitoring the University's compliance with faculty consulting policies and procedure. As you will see in the report, the faculty consulting oversight committee determined that the University is complying with state statute. Furthermore, the committee had no explicit recommendations for improvement of the program over the next year, including that the University has made ongoing and serious efforts to implement improvements. Each year, the committee shares the report with board of trustees and other legislative committees.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this report, the faculty that has gone to the legislature? Again, I think it's excellent news that we have not seen any issues and it continues to do what it's supposed to do. All right. And are there any other items at this point? All right. Thank you, Probst Kennedy. I'm now going to turn this over to President Herbst, who's going to introduce our guest presenter, which is our very own board of trustees, distinguished professor, Dr. Sally Reese. He'll be presenting on the Stanford faculty, the end curtain of plans. President Herbst.
Thanks, trustee Dennis Levine. So a brief presentation today from Professor Sally Reese, but also from Terrence Cheng, who's the director of Stanford campus, and some absolutely terrific students from Stanford. I'll let them take their place with just a few notes. So Sally, and everybody here knows her so well and how much she's done for the university, but one thing you may not know is that she has long been the champion of our regional campuses, including the kind of the very emotional transition of students from Torrenton to our other campuses, and maybe some of you remember that. She cares very deeply about all UConn students, no matter where they are and why they're there. And I have to, I stress being a very fine college professor, but I think it runs a lot more deeply. And Sally is a person who was a K-12 teacher long before she became a top flight academic. So it's a little unusual and hierarchication. I think it's why she cares so much more about the students than the typical college professor. She's a true educator in a way that a lot of college faculty just aren't because we aren't dealing with a whole spectrum of students from K-12 through college. So Sally was willing to do this project for us on Stanford, helping us to catch up with the booming enrollments that we have in Stanford. Stanford is a place that is a couple of decades behind where it should be in terms of its overall development, given its strategic location and with our housing that we have now and our growing enrollment. So it's time to catch up, and by catch up, I mean building on strengths, building the tenure line faculty, and creating some exciting majors for students, advising them so they can be successful. And we have majors there needing to be buttressed some, and there are some that could be completed at Stanford with just a few more faculty. So I get a lot of pressure on building Stanford rightfully from the governor's offices, past legislators, in the city, and most of all, for the business community of Fairfield County. So the business community, they want more interns, they want a wider breadth of learning, they want more graduates to hire. I just had a great visit with Congressman Hines in Washington, and he urged me to step it up, and we are. So there is this odd net, and we talked about this some other time a little bit today, that about the regional campuses that a lot of you understand, but to underscore, many, many students at Stanford, at Hartford, at Avery Point, at Waterbury, do not want to come to stores at all. It's not as though they're there to get room to stores as they're not trying to get here. They want more majors, more faculty, so that they can stay put at campuses they love. Not everybody wants to view public environment or rural environment or this particular experience, hence the success that you've seen nationwide at urban campuses like NYU, USF, Northeastern, BU, Miami, a lot of other urban campuses that have just exploded over the last decade. Students graduate from Avery Point, from Hartford, Hartford, Waterbury, they graduate with UConn degrees. So those happen to be the same quality degrees that they get from stores, and that's why we work on these campuses and in particular, try to build the faculty and majors. That was way longer than I intended to ask Sally. Take it away.
Thank you. It's nice to be back and also to have the opportunity to work on this plan. So as many of you know, there's been many changes in Stanford. Certainly, housing has had a big impact, but also has, I think, the environment and the opportunities for new majors. So not only is Stanford strategically located outside of New York City, but it is a great place in terms of workforce demand and opportunities for new majors, opportunities for students to be able to have experiences at both an urban center as the city of Stanford as well as New York City. So we have, and I'll be referring to several of these things, but we have right now opportunities for additional majors, and part of this is, of course, from the data that we collected. So probably the most important data point is that we have a 44% increase in undergraduate enrollments in Stanford. That's almost amazing. We actually haven't seen that kind of increase in any place. So in the last six years, we've gone from 1,377 students to 1,977 students, and those increases have been accommodated by students looking for things that they can't get there. So just a couple of term definitions. When we say students complete UConn, that means they completed any of our campuses. So when I talk about lack of retention or retention happening, unfortunately, it means that students are not just leaving Stanford, but they're leaving UConn as well. So we've done actually fairly well with retention in most of our regional campuses. You can see from these figures that our one-year retention is about 80-82%, that's about 10% lower than it is at stores. Our two-year retention, that is freshman to sophomore year, is about 76%, that's quite a bit lower than it is at stores. But overall, a lot of this retention or the students that are leaving lack of retention is because students can't get majors in certain places. So as President Herbst mentioned, we have a number of academic majors that have been completed at our regional campuses. Stanford has about the most. Remember that if students are in Hartford, they can get a bus and come to stores and take a couple of courses. If they're in Stanford, that opportunity simply isn't there. It's just too far away, it's too long. So there are currently 15 bachelor's degree programs that are available at the Stanford campus. Almost all of these are also majors that are offered at stores. There's a couple of business majors that are unique to Stanford, and that was purposeful. When I was in the provost's office, we tried very hard to have at least one or two unique majors at each of the regional campuses so that that campus would be known and known in sciences, for example, at Avery Point. And you know that students can begin any of our 110 majors at any campus, but the majority for all of the majors other than this 15, they have to transfer to stores. So what we did is we learned to do the planning on this. We took a look at lots of different things. We took a look at numbers, we took a look at existing majors, we looked closely at the data on retention, we took a very close look at within the majors, how many individuals would leave Stanford and come to stores, how many would leave Stanford and not return, and where they went when they left Stanford. And probably the most interesting thing that we looked at was the students that were majors that came in with declared majors as opposed to came in undeclared, and that was actually the most striking statistic, because we're losing almost 40 to 50% of the undeclared majors, meaning when they go to Stanford, certainly not at stores, when they go to Stanford as an undeclared major, they end up, many of them almost half, maybe after a couple of years, and that just means they can't find what they want to major in. So this is a good plan for a lot of reasons, we think. We're not only highlighting the majors that we believe should be the most popular based on numbers for by decade, but also we're going to retain people. I have many, I have 50, 50-some meetings about this plan, and you know, one of the things that Nathan, first, and I talked about is we can't bring in students that have not had the resources to retain them. So this is our plan. We plan to expand Stanford, and we plan to expand with highlighting the new majors, and these are the new majors that we'll highlight. So of all of the majors in terms of popularity in stores, communications, biology, allied health are at the very top of the list. So we're going to be adding three new majors in those areas that are also top choice majors in stores. So we'll have a new major in communications, a new major in biological sciences, but it will focus on human biology because much of the workforce development in Stanford is related to healthcare. And then we'll add a major in allied health, which is a booming major in stores. We'll also add a major in journalism, and a major in journalism will highlight the digital media program down there. So we chose three majors primarily because of sheer numbers, and another major because it's one of our very best majors in terms of prize winners and award winners in stores, but also because it fits so well. So think of the opportunities between communications and journalism and digital media, all in line of a small self-contained campus. We'll also expand in majors that will surprise a number of you, so obviously computer sciences, and you'll see the areas of computer science in a minute. We'll also expand in psychology, psychological sciences, and we'll also be expanding business, which is booming. I work closely with the deans in CLAS, in engineering, in business, in school of fine arts, to be able to plan all of this, and we think that these are not only complimentary, but exciting opportunities. So these will be our new majors, and this is kind of the tada moment. These are our faculty hiring. We believe that this is the smart thing to do. We believe that this will pay for itself by students that don't leave Stanford and that continue and finish their degree there, but also we believe that these are smart investments for the state. These are areas that there's lots of jobs in, and we also know that these are areas of this expansion. You'll see the opportunities for more tenure track faculty, which means hopefully more research and more added excitement and intellectual rigor and intellectual vigor. So rigor and vigor built in the same place. So these are the actual hires. The first phase will actually, we'll start our hiring process this coming fall, so we'll be posting for faculty this fall for hire the next year, and the next year after that, in the fall of 2021, we'll start our hires in fall of 2020 for hire in 2021. So overall, we'll be hiring 24 faculty. You notice that there's 13 the first year and 11 the second year. Lots of excitement about this in Stanford, and also lots of excitement, I think, on the parts, not only of the students, but also the other faculty, many of whom are working in very, very small groups. We'll accompany that with some staff hires, and these will, we hope, plant the seeds for some other expansion. So we don't want to bring more students in and then not be able to advise them and retain them, so we'll have a higher level academic advising person. We plan to add, with the support of Student Affairs, we plan to add honors housing, so that will be an honors floor in the new residence hall there, which we think will be very exciting and be a way of attracting new students. So we'll have a high-level academic advising person, a new director of internship opportunities for New York City, so so many of our students will be placed in additional students, and we worked, I worked with Radek Comera on some of the plans she has, and we're going to come together. We'll have a new CEO manager for more online and distance learning, more hopefully certificate cases, more opportunities for us to do online teaching and learning. We'll have a new mental health manager, more support for faculty. We can't bring faculty in and then not have anybody that can help them, and then also some stuff for admissions, so campus steward coordinator. Phase two, we'll add three other people, and you'll notice the focus is also on opportunities for online and distance learning, which we think will be very exciting there. Other Stanford campus additions that I mentioned, we mentioned, of course, we have additional residence halls going in, Radek Comera's opportunity, Innovate Stanford, this will, of course, work well. We hope to institute a faculty exchange program. We often see faculty who want to transfer to stores, but believe it or not, there are also faculty that would like to teach in Stanford, and we'd like to see that go both ways, enabling people to go for a year, a semester, or even permanently if they'd like to move and teach in a different place for different reasons. And then we hope to add more certificate programs. So those are kind of the hub of the plan. I think a lot of the decisions we made about what to add, for example, in engineering, computer science, we want to focus on engineering, entertainment, engineering finance, engineering cybersecurity. Dean L.A. and I spent a lot of time talking about how the business program might expand, and we decided to leave the faculty hires a little bit open so we can look at creativity and innovation and finance, and potentially even accounting, which we think would be a very, very important major. So let me stop there and see what questions we have. I would mention that President Herbst and I went down to Stanford, and we presented the plans of faculty and staff, and there was tremendous amount of excitement and energy in the room, and people are just thrilled because, you know, the addition, 44% increase in freshmen, means that we have obviously some stress on current faculty, current staff. So tremendous excitement on the part of the faculty and the staff who realize that this plan was going to be voted with you today and send their excitement and appreciation.
Question?
Tom, that's your, can I make a couple comments?
Yes, then, just maybe make your comments.
So as members of the board probably know, I grew up in Stanford, at G-Capital in Stanford, and over decades watched the evolution of Stanford. Just as a reminder, long ago, the University of Connecticut was in the woods of North Stanford, a very sleepy little spot. I can say today that it's a very dynamic place. Take the opportunity to come down and visit the facility and just walk the hall, you'll experience immediately the feeling of enormous diversity in terms of student population, diversity of interests, and a real high level of activity and buzz, and that's just a physical characteristic of it. Notably, and something I'm particularly interested in, is the evolution of the business world programming down there. I forget Sally, probably not many years ago, we started this management program because of the essential location of financial services as a management company, banking institution, lenders, notably G-Capital, and then just the natural need to train people in terms of how to think about risk and risk management. And that program has absolutely exploded, so there's hundreds now that have gone through the program or are going through the program. And Tom and his team have other ideas as to establish sort of the next great program, and for example, capital markets is a very, very important activity in this world. So and the other, the other physical change that was literally groundbreaking was the addition of housing. Their bidding to come off around for very, very long period of time. We're at 110% occupancy, could easily build another building, I know the team is keeping their eyes on us, what the smart thing to do is here. All of that just ends up remaining, and I concur with Sally's assessment here, is that the people that want to go to school about UConn in downtown Stanford, these young people, they want a more of a city experience. Not unlike, by the way, what's being experienced in Hartford, so I'm close by just saying, Stanford is a incredible asset that needs to be invested in to take advantage of, and I've already taken the opportunity to mention to the university president that he needs to pay attention to. So Sally, thanks for a great piece of work, and I wholeheartedly endorse the investment and afford even more investment.
Thank you. You make me a very nice, trustee.
Hi. This plan looks fantastic, but with that, Brooklyn students, are you concerned about this whole campus, UConn, the larger space, all this space to handle all this?
We're in the middle of taking a closer look at space and trying to figure out what we can do with the space that we have. There's certainly room within the classrooms, but I should mention that we work very closely with the campus director, Terrence Cheng, and we'll hear from him, and we have the university architects down in town. You know, it's an old department, as you know, it's an old department store, so there is actually space that actually could be converted into some of the hallways. We don't want to take away the dynamic downstairs area, which is filled down, hanging tables and students everywhere. It's a wonderful environment, but we do believe there's some opportunities for space recovery in the building, and, you know, in the future, there's lots of space around that also could be looked at. Right now, I think we can handle what we're talking about with what we have, again, some possible changes and some, you know, reconfiguration of some offices and classrooms.
It's a great question. We're good for a few years, for sure, even with this expansion, but one of the terrific things about building a Hartford campus is that we have to build it our way, and it's so, it's beautiful, it's efficient, it's incredibly productive in terms of space utilization, and Stanford is on the other end of continuing. For a department store, it did pretty darn well, but it is a moment to thank Robert Corbett, who's here, and he's, you know, he's sitting in the back somewhere. You know, Robert is our, you know, he's our man in Stanford, constantly thinking about the space, working with the neighborhood, working with the city. I think the streets get better and working on the new residence hall, and it's, you know, it's time consuming and baby steps, but thank you, Robert, and I'm glad we're on the way.
Stale, I.
Thank you. I think it's a very promising concept, and I have to work for a large employer at Stanford. There are no other universities present in that city, so this is a great beach. We hire probably 100 college graduates a year. There are a few UConn grads at this point, but the ability for students working in Stanford Financial Services to intern and be able to commute to our offices, which are a mile and a half from downtown Stanford, I think there are tremendous opportunities from a career perspective for students interested in financial services by having this beach at Stanford, because our industry is largely headquartered in the Stanford area, and there is not a lot of universities specifically present in that area. So this is a great, I think, in terms of career prospects for students interested in financial services. And it also has the housing piece. I think we'll also take it in student, because, you know, we developed an internship program on the legal side, and I insisted that if we're going to do this, we had to hire UConn law students. The challenge we had is a lot of UConn law students couldn't afford housing, even with salary in Stanford. We added a partner in Hartford, and we offered them a summer internship, including people from Hartford to Stanford today. Having housing on this, I think, is also going to provide an opportunity for students to do internships, not just in local county, but even in the city, you have a bunch more available rates. So I think it's a great investment in the future of both support.
Couple of questions from Sally. And I see Nathan's here as well. In terms of first-generation students for Stanford, can you talk a little bit about that?
It is the most diverse. I mean, Hartford and Stanford by far the most diverse of all of our campuses, but in particular in Stanford, the reason that a lot of students will not be able to come to stores is that they are first generation. I believe it's over 50% of the population in Stanford right now is first-generation students. The diversity is, sometimes when you're there, you actually are just shocked because it's so different than stores. I was there, I've been there several times, but one day that I was there, I don't think I saw a street that was like, I mean, that's just how amazingly diverse, exciting, and energetic. And a lot of these students, of course, are students that come from high poverty high schools, so they don't necessarily have the preparation initially to go into the most competitive majors. So what's wonderful about Stanford is the small environment, the smaller classes that actually get them, they're smart enough, they just happen to have the same kind of background, they have the same kind of resources and opportunities. Many of them are also at home, taking care of their younger siblings, helping their parents, working two or three jobs. So I think that the expansion in Stanford is the very best we can do for students who come from places like Ridgeport High School and others. And for them, of course, UConn is not only a profitable opportunity, but it's also an opportunity that will support them, and that's what we want to do, even more of support students, and that's why we want to have more advisors, that's why we want to have more opportunities in the residence halls to be able to retain and support.
Thank you. And I've become a decent fan using the CT ramp quite often, and we talked about Stanford being somewhat removed from stores, but in terms of Hartford, I mean, the way the train runs back and forth, and you're just right there, Stanford's running, so do UConn, so I think.
And there is a shuttle bus now, I think most of you probably know this, that runs between the Stanford campus and the train station continuously, so it's so easy. The adding of a human biology major and also some of the majors in business that can be actually taken in other places could actually even enhance, you know, that reverse commute. We also believe that there's a possibility we pull some students from New York to Stanford, so, you know, people that are thinking of New York City but actually live there or want to commute up to Stanford, it's easy that way as well.
Yeah. One thing Sally and Terrence might talk about a lot, and have for a few years, is New York, and that's what makes this absolutely amazing. This is our piece of property that has not been, you know, developed enough, invested enough, that is, you know, less than an hour away from the greatest city in the world, in my view, my way. An unbelievable opportunity, except for the business school, which has done very well there, you know, not taking advantage of it, and we do go out and my view. An unbelievable opportunity, except for the business school, which has done very well there, you know, not taking advantage of it. And we do go out and search for faculty and staff. I mean, one of the amazing things is having a labor pool of New York City and all the talented people there. We do have a lot of faculty here that live in New York that would like to move closer down there. We get that pool. But of course, at the end of the day, it's about our students, internships, placing them in jobs in New York and Fairfield County. So let's not forget the gigantic, that's a three hundred pound gorilla that we're, we're talking about at the end of the day here. It's location, location, location. It's.
Thank you very much. If there's another question.
I want to say, first of all, thank you to Susan for having trusted this initiative. And then thank you for Sally for what I know is an enormous amount of work to pull this plan together. I, I think this plan is going to respond to student demand that exists already and will create its own demand. And I think that, I think this program is going to continue our mission of educating these students to take jobs or employers that were dreaming of still this and better than they should be. I think this program just wants to that. So just thanks and go on.
Morning Sally. Morning, I see. You know, I've got a decatur of Cory Frey. She's the best recorder we have. Rachel's a picture. Question, I got several calls last night from Waterbury. Who said they'd been promised the Ally Health to go to Waterbury. Do you know why we have that expectation and why, why did, whether we can still have Ally Health go to Waterbury? Does it seem like it's a financial thing?
Right, no. I mean, I, I know, I was actually speaking to the department head and the dean and how about Ally Health. They mentioned that Waterbury had approached them and I think they need an additional faculty number. I don't know if that's currently in the budget, but it's absolutely no conflict to have another major in Ally Health than Waterbury. In fact, you know, what, what we saw when we were doing touring into Waterbury is that there's, there's movement all the time along the between campuses. There'll be movement from Waterbury to Stanford, Stanford to Waterbury. It wouldn't be a conflict to add. And I do think that request him for one faculty number. I'm not, I don't know whether it's in the budget.
It's not. Well, can we, there's a big expectation. These are all, you're going to get these small calls tomorrow.
Oh, I get a lot.
Okay, yeah. Jake, did you take care of this?
I can talk.
Yeah.
I mean, but Tom, the larger question is, and you know, I went to the faculty senate to talk about this plan a few weeks ago, and there was something represented there from Waterbury, it's like, you know, we need investment too. It's true. I mean, you know, we can only do so much, but I think Waterbury, including side Ally Health, you know, they've got maybe not as much a loop of demand in Stanford, maybe not the great, you know, the great, the region with regard to economic development and business opportunity, but it needs attention as well. I mean, I would like, you know, my dream is that all these campuses are more like Hartford. And that Hartford has, because of the school's social work, because of the Department of Public Policy, they have just a really solid tenure line faculty there that makes it a great community. Avery Point also for different reasons, and that the kind of the geographic nature of that campus, maybe that campus, but Stanford and Waterbury, we can have fair amount of attention. So it's, it's very well taken, not just about Ally Health, but they're taking a larger picture. We want like, have to get that Starbucks down there, darn it.
I mean, so what's going to happen, do you believe, at that position?
Yeah, we're kind of absolutely that one. And then we also have, as long as we're talking with regional campuses, Avery Point has a real need for the psychology, psychology, they'd add a whole major there. So those two, in the whole scheme of our larger two million dollar budget, like we can do.
Okay, so somebody could sit down and have a real good conversation with whoever you need to go to Waterbury, to let them know that they're part of this plan, you know, the expectations that we have, that we really want to have them prosper the whole Stanford. Again, I don't want anybody to have feelings sensitive. If I'm being somebody, I'm taking away from them.
Right. And that is, and excellent. So again, let's.
And one last question, in terms of the housing component, so we're increased housing, are we still talking about us guaranteeing payments for our students?
What do you mean, guaranteed housing?
In other words, what we, we're doing, if we, Stanford is able, the private public program will fight against it because we guarantee our students rents, or our payments. Are we doing, are we still doing that for, are we expanding housing in Stanford?
We're, we're doing that for the building that we contracted for.
Right.
From already that in Washington. We are doing that for some units in, in another building. As of last summer, we rented additional units. And we're hoping that for next year, a newer building will be online, we will do that as well.
Now, it's not going to come back to us, right? That we, we are guaranteeing the students' payments?
Yeah, what we're really doing is we're renting the units and the students are paying us in front of them. So we are, we are, we're guaranteeing, we're spending the guarantee we're actually, we're actually.
When you have that conversation with Waterbury, I believe that they have a building that they, they would be, would they like to have standard conditions? In other words, if they would like to have student housing in Waterbury, have us guarantee the rents. So when you have a Waterbury discussion, can you please put down the table too?
So they've got the, we'll get, Sally will get back to you, but there's this developer that built a, a campus next to the Waterbury campus, so that was just noted about here.
That must be the one we're talking about.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't have any, that's a different form of relationship with that network. It's more like, more like a marketing relationship.
But just put housing on the table when you have this conversation, so we all are on the same page, don't we all?
Hey, Susan, quick question. Not necessarily to answer now, but distance learning. And how's that fitting in with all of this? And how does it help us with the different campuses and Stanford and teachers as well?
That's great. That's a great question. Well, then we, we have not really had personnel in Stanford to do it. So if you looked at the staff, the staff staffing that I had mentioned, the actual staffing really extends distance learning. We have a seat manager, we have a technology certificate, we have an instructional design person down there to help with online hybrid flipped. The idea of being able to sign a pain is liquid students in your classes and also do much, much better on it. It's, it's a goal we had for a long time. We can't do that without people. So we're actually adding three people over the next cycle of hiring in the next two years. And we believe we can drastically expand that.
To Stanford.
Right, well, it'll be, it could actually be across all campuses. So once we have online courses that we know are in high demand areas across the regional campuses, then all campuses will benefit. We can, you know, potentially get some of the, the most dynamic, exciting faculty at the regional campuses and at stores to share classes among places. And that, that's our goal. So keep, can't do it without people. So having these three individuals that we're going to hire over the next few years, having a plan in place. I remember you had Peter Diplin, and we hope to, to do a lot more. And we also hope to expand certificate courses down there, which we think would actually be beneficial for the university as well. All of everybody, that, again, most of these are online as well.
Thank you.
Thanks for indulging us, but we, yeah, I think they got it at four thirty or five o'clock this morning, I don't know. But we have Terrence Chang and we've got three students from Stanford who are turned up. Come on up, they will know, I told you three times. I'm, I'm going to keep down there. I'm going to sit down. Students stay up. Terrence just wanted to say a few quick words, introduce our students. And, and thanks everybody again for.
Thank you everyone. We're thrilled to be here. We don't mind waking up at four forty-five in the morning. For this purpose, thank you to Sally and her vision, her determination to get this done, the time she put in has been amazing, has been very educational for me. Thank you to Susan for her unbelievable support, for her clarity of purpose in investing in Stanford and really guiding us through this. I want to thank all of the deans and the vice presidents and all of the people who tolerate me on a daily basis and their, and their people who really, without the effort of every single unit, without my purview, I mean, every single unit across the university has had made a presence on the growth and the success of this campus. So without all of you, without all of you, we cannot get this done. So that's been a remarkable effort across the entire university. Thank you to boards for the time they put in for helping to guide us, for your support that you're voicing right now. It makes me feel very happy. I think we're going to have a nice apartment home after this. So, you know, we don't get a chance, this is a generational opportunity, to transform a campus like Stanford or a university like UConn. It is a once in a generation opportunity. It is a challenge, it is an opportunity that we truly relish with this expansion. We are going to truly establish UConn as a pillar of the community, not just in Fairfield County, but across the state and in the region. With this expansion, we are going to become even richer and deeper training ground for our students to help them achieve great things in their personal and in their professional lives. And with this expansion, UConn Stanford takes the next step toward becoming an engine of economic development that prepares our students to meet the needs of today's industries and communities for the 21st century of education. So with that, I'm going to introduce to you the real reason why we are here, our students. So today I bring to you Isabel Ferrante, Cory Frey, Elisa Melendez, and Isabel will start.
Hello, everybody. Nice to see you all here today. So my name is Isabel Ferrante. I am currently a senior at UConn Stanford, to graduate in December. I'm a history major with a psychology and English minor. And I originally came to UConn Stanford basically because it was the most important choice for me. It was local, I could commute, the tuition was very low, it was wonderful. I had originally planned to like, hopefully one day, you know, come up to stores, the big campus, all that stuff. But I found myself actually kind of falling in love with the Stanford campus. And so as you can see, I stayed there all four years because I could complete my major and my minors there. And I completely, I loved my time, I loved my time, I'm very sad that I'm going to be leaving. I found that I was able to satisfy all of my academic needs with wonderful professors. Also, I was able to participate in the extracurricular community. I established two clubs, been participating in Too Much To Cow, meeting a lot of people. And really, it's been a wonderful community. And especially having arrived in the fall of 2015 and leaving in December of 2019, it's incredible the amount of growth I've seen so far. And I'm a little jealous that I'm still able to see where it goes in the future. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, it's good to be here today. My name is Cory Frey. Like my friend Bella, I'm a history major. I'm also a political science minor and a political studies minor. I'm from Darien, so I'm just from the town over and coming to Stanford. Very easy, short commute, affordable, not a paper housing, not being far away. Not just from family and friends, but also very nice to be in close to New York City. As I mentioned, it's a great asset, certainly, in helping come, especially help develop. We take some extra exams after as well, so it's an asset for us, certain for our extracurriculars. Stanford really has been an amazing experience for me. I came in knowing that I was set in history and thinking that I would come up to stores after my first two years. But I ended up getting so involved in the campus, in student government, where I worked in the secretary, getting involved in various clubs and also finding work on campus, as well as knowing and real close to the community of friends on campus. I found that I did really want to go. I even submitted the application, decided to stay in Stanford to finish out my last few years. And so, and I think without doubt, one of the most important things about Stanford is the sense of community. We started out circumvires, there was more small campuses, as we mentioned before, growing amazingly. And it's an occasion that we're, in summer, I was able to see and also, and also facilitate some of the new students coming in. But I, I think, again, the strength of Stanford as a community, we have such great host of professors and adjuncts and faculty members who are all willing to work with students. And I think that's amazing that bringing more faculty in to help assist in that, and to, to broaden, expand upon the great work that our faculty members are doing is a really great opportunity. Stanford is a city full of promise for students in terms of professional work, in terms of being close to city, in terms of internships. I can't wait to see what happens if ever I have a ship full.
Thank you, your question.
Good morning. My name is Elisa Melendez. I'm a political science major and a women studies minor at UConn Stanford. I think, unlike my friends, I actually decided to go to UConn Stanford because I would never have to go to stores. I, I'm also here to represent, I transferred from Rockingham College after getting my associates there. And we can talk about that, the amount of students that go to UConn after going, start first starting at community colleges. When I was at NCC in the fall of 2013 as a nineteen-year-old, I decided to run for office in Norwalk, where I'm from, the common council there. And I won, which is great because I was able to serve my community and also get a degree at Rockingham College. But in the spring of 2017, when I was graduating from NCC, I kind of had to sit down and make a decision, you know, where am I going to transfer to, where am I going to finish my degree? And, you know, being Fairfield County, everyone talks about Fairfield University, Cedar Hard, University of Bridgeport, and of course, UConn Stanford. And the biggest thing for me was doing my research and finding out, well, I can't go to UConn if I have to, if I only start my degree there, I would have to finish at stores because now I would have to make the decision, do I not run for reelection and go up to stores? Is it possible to both, you know, represent, continue to represent my community and serve while finishing my degree? And I remember it was like the happiest day, I called my mom and I was like, Mom, I can get, I can start and finish political science at UConn Stanford, so that's it, that's where I want to go. And of course, that's right now. And even though I started in the fall of 2017, it was crazy, this insane amount of growth that was seen on campus in just a short amount of time. And I mean, every semester, there are changes, there's so many different people, new professors, new classes to take. And I would, I just, I feel so blessed that I had the opportunity to be a husband because I wouldn't have if Stanford didn't exist. It just was, it was going to be too hard, the decision. I just invested so much time in my community and being able to go to class and then being a photo meeting was the number one thing that, that I wanted to be able to do. And I get to do that at UConn Stanford. And I'm really happy to just be here and to tell you this because that's a real thing for a lot of Fairfield County students, people who want to be a part of the UConn system but just can't really justify making the commitment to stores. There's nothing like being close to home and not having to spend that much money on housing. And, and being able to just do all that and, and play an important role in your community, but also be able to go to school. So I'm, I'm really thankful to be here and thank you all for, for your commitment and your support to UConn and to Stanford.
Thank you. Terrence, again, thank you for everything that you do. You're quite the leader in Stanford and we're very lucky to have you. There's no other, that's closed your presentation? Okay, great. Then make that a motion in a second. Karen, please.
Thank you.
On the paper?
Aye.
All right. I'm usually can do extra time, so apologize.
We have short agenda today, so I'd like to call the meeting to order, the Financial Affairs Committee. And everybody's in the room, so I'll make the, this will be sharing, Cantor, Snee, Frank Caprè, Merel, and Dara, I see, Phil Rubin, Van Gaal, and Mark Boxer, you're not at the room. Okay. Thank you. To start the meeting today, you'll find that you see the Financial Affairs supplemental documents. The package includes an updated agenda, but also a copy of the presentation to be presented later in the meeting. Due to the importance of these discussions, I'd like to ask for a motion in a second to defer the presentation discussion approval of the fiscal year 2020 B schedules in the full board. Your next motion, okay?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you. We set a few action items today. One is to motion in a second if I could to approve the minutes of the Financial Affairs Committee meeting, January 30, 2019, this circulating.
So.
Okay. Discussion changes? Thank you. I approve. Aye. Eddie Hayes? And your board of assesses. Scott, would you take us through, we only have a few contract agreements, would you take us through those?
Sure, I'll direct your attention to attachment one, what contract agreements. There's a very light list, this one, the only one that I want to draw your attention to is number two on that list, H V Communications. I draw your attention to that really just to highlight two things. First is that this is a contract for audiovisual equipment that we will use across all university campuses, highlighting our efforts to be more standardized under our, our UConn approach across both stores, regional and market campuses. And second, that this is a contract that we procure. And second, that this is a contract that we procure through the state community college system, again, highlighting our desire to be more statewide, collaborative, and work within consortia, global, to reduce the workload on us, to be more efficient, but also to get better deals to ensure spend statewide. So that's the only contract that I want to draw your attention to. Matt Marson and I are here if you have questions about any of the contracts and attachments.
Great. Did you have questions? Grab a motion in a second to approve all the contracts and agreements presented.
So.
Any further discussion, questions? Got any, any, grab a ayes to approve?
Aye.
Any extensions? Any hesitations? Thank you, motion passes. Thanks, Scott. Scott, would you then also take us through the capital project budgets?
Sure. If I may before that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to draw your attention to attachment C. This is not for your approval, but similar to our contracts that we just asked for your approval for, in your board, but you'll always see from us listed contracts for your information for a policy that's not required to university contract under $1 million to your, for your approval. But this is along the list of attachment C this month, and I'd like you to at least be aware that this is our annual review of our on-call trade contracts. This is what I said, the long list includes many, many Connecticut-based small contractors, electrical, general contractors, aged back, installation, basically, painting, plumbing, roofing, and site work. This is the pool of contractors that we use for small jobs on the campus, for split large facilities, offices. And it's a very good program. They pre-qualify their procurement, quality processes, but once they're in our pool, we can just call them up and use them for, as I said, for small jobs. These are mostly, I think they may be all Connecticut contractors, a great many small minority businesses, and as I said before, a good deal of our facilities may be spent to cover to, like, to draw your attention to that because we're actually very proud of this program.
So these contracted developments, Scott, are not to exceed, every one of them are each, I think every time that one of the on-call services we hire, there's an invoice in the end or, yeah, there's a contract or something that's put in place, right?
That's right. There's a separate, there's a contract that's put in place for each job and it's kept under and not to exceed them.
Same in the committee, have you questions? Okay, if you don't need a motion, maybe this is.
I just wanted to draw your attention to that.
Thank you. Now the capital project.
I've only got two projects for your approval this month and one similar to my last one but to just draw your attention to. Not necessarily working on. Tap 12, where these science quad improvements, this is an area between several new sites, well, it's chemistry, building, engineering, and science, art bio, pharmacy. If you're familiar with that part of campus, through new construction, we've actually created a new quad. As of right now, this new sort of science quad is just grass, contractors' grass between, was at one time, three construction sites. This program, $2 million budget, is actually properly landscape that area, create walkways and address the property issues immediately adjacent to that space. The second project for your approval for is under tap 13. And this one, we are looking for a waiver of the three-stage approval process. This is a large, simple project to repave and lighting, and our L T part in one, so it's a simple, but it is a simple repaving. But it's big, I think a lot is over 1,000 spaces, which is why it costs a lot of dollars to do. And I can see your questions, particular questions on that. And then lastly, not looking for approval, but we will see at your tab, it's 14. We were initially wanting to see approval for pre-development costs on the hot arena at $6 million. We have reevaluated what pre-development costs would be, mark out a disorder or environmental and permitting work. It would be less than $500,000, it would be about $450,000. So I want to bring it to your attention and then, in that we don't need board approval to begin that work, but also recommit to the G and E and Financial Affairs meetings that we could either not sign any pre-development agreement or we undertake any of that work without the G and E board. As it really is, well, it's only $450,000 and it's the beginning for a much larger project of the dark, hot arena in terms of development.
Okay, so I give a motion in a second to approve, number three and four, the science quad, second, approvals, the W T line, logical, it's part of the investigation, okay.
Second.
Any further questions, you have a session? That I will approve.
Aye.
Any extensions? Any basis? Thank you. Motion passes. Your information on this, the tax, and eight, and you'll have the second session, if it's not a motion, a second to adjourn. All favor, aye. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for these, for this committee.
Let's call a meeting of board trustees, board. And I ask you to go, go call up trustees present and un-called.
Chairman Cooper?
Here.
Andy Distin?
Here.
Aaron Boxer? Charles Benow?
Here.
Chair Cantor?
Here.
Richard Cardray?
Here.
Sanford Cloud?
Here.
Melody Kirby? You're Dennis Levine?
Here.
Ruel Gendara?
Here.
Janine Gallant?
Here.
David Lehman?
Oba?
Here.
Paul Adams? Dennis Nathan?
Here.
Kevin O'Connor?
Here.
Thomas Ritter?
Here.
Philip Rubin?
Here.
Sam Silverwitz?
Here.
Donna Choma?
Here.
Diane Russell. Mr. Chairman, have a forum.
Thank you. Are there individuals here who want to publicly participate? Just, I had to mention before we begin, as you know, a few weeks ago, the board voted to name Tom Casselis as our 16 presidents. He is starting August 1, Susan's contract, the schedule to terminate on June 30. And Susan has graciously agreed to stay at the end of the conference, which would be what would have been the end of term, the meeting time stamp. So Susan, thank you for that, thank you for the introduction, Tim, in this transition. Over the next few months, President President Casselis, once, on several occasions, there were series of meetings that were here, and the board is around. The minister meetings on January 30 and February 5, I'd like a motion and a second to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. During that, the minister approves. Consent on agenda items, I would like a motion in a second to approve all of the consent agenda items. And I want to ask if anybody needs to abstain?
I'd like to scan number one, please.
Anytime, anybody else? I also want to ask if anyone wishes for an approval? So I'd like a motion in second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Aye.
Bring opposition, the motion passes. Thank you. President's report, Mr. Herbst.
Thank you, Chairman, and thanks again, Chairman of American Affairs, for letting us take up the entire talk before, I'm really grateful. Thanks so much to trustees, Mounds, and Ritter on Waterbury. As the mayor of Waterbury can tell you, I'm, and we have been, at least these last few years, bullish on Waterbury, Scott and I working on Starbucks, and our Hartford building, that wasculberry. That building, beautiful. And with the developer who, even though he didn't have anything to do with it in our case, you know, built a nice building for students next door to live in, talk about the depth of individual work that we do with students, but realized that our outlook is 32,000. And in giving students the skills and the resources they need to be successful to drive their ambition as far as they want to drive it into local elections and beyond, but also be given the skills to be successful as individuals. So I want to show you, not bad. I want to show you what we're looking at nationally, and this is about a 10-year snapshot of what our directors of college counseling are reporting nationally that they're seeing among their student bodies. And there are three trends that they call out. So one, the blue color is depression among the student body. You'll see there's been some variance there, but holding fairly constant if you're looking at the range from when we started reporting the data in 2000, that was in this snapshot. But I call your attention also to anxiety. We see this going up increasingly. We see it at UConn, we see it nationally, and that's something we really want to pay close attention to. But then I also call out green and relationship development. And college in many ways is the same as what we may recall it being ourselves, you know, learning how to engage interpersonally during a time of significant emotional development for our students. Continue to be a very prevalent trend among our students nationally, it's something that we work with our populations on. Now, very specifically, UConn, and I want to frame this data for you, this is coming to us directly from our students. So this is not clinical data, this is not data on how we're treating or diagnosing students, this is what our students are telling us. And the question was in effect, over the last 30 days, you know, have you felt the following things? And our students responded. Now, I would ask you, what do you think is my greatest point of concern on this chart? It's, you know, students charged with the safety and well-being of student body.
Suicide.
Suicide, libations, these are students thinking that harm to themselves, but not necessarily attempting, but thinking so. At a point of unhappiness and isolation where we're very concerned about risk of harm to themselves or others. I would actually say that's not it. It's loneliness. It is 40% of our students feeling at some point on campus that they are unconnected, unsupported, disengaged. That to me makes me worry about greater things down the road, but that is the population I really want to engage, I want to empower, I want to give resources to, and I want to sway in their feelings about their capacity to be successful and welcomed on the UConn campus. So I mention that because that is our pivot point of care. I'll show you in a moment the work that we're doing in counseling mental health, which is very direct indication of the students. That takes us for several thousand students, that will help us through a significant portion of the student body, but it doesn't sway us to changing to a culture of care on campus. And our work now is to develop a culture of care on campus so we can deal with students telling us they are consistently feeling overwhelmed on campus, they are feeling above-average stress, they would know that's a 12-month measure for them on that particular bar. And this sense of anxiety and loneliness, that's really where we want to pivot to change a culture on campus. And I'll talk about our wellness initiatives. This is the work that we're doing in counseling mental health. And as you can see, it's an upward trend. And I think that says a lot to those of us who aren't currently 18 to 25, about reduction in stigma about getting help on campus. You know, Betsy's area serving 10% of the UConn stores population, that is an incredibly significant number for us, and we're happy that we're engaging students. That encounter number is so high, over 20,000, because not only are we working with students in the clinical setting, we are using the asset of a very robust counseling mental health staff to engage and educate others across the campus. So when we are using those staff to use their skill as psychologists and psychiatrists and therapists and case managers, we're using that so we can broadly educate and engage the community, we can consult with faculty who have points of concern for a student, but we are doing more than the individual appointment student. I will also say and thank all of you deeply, this has been a resource that despite budget constraints, we have increased staffing in this area. We have increased staffing in counseling mental health specifically by seven, maybe seven and a half full-time equivalent employees. That has allowed us to bolster work that's incredibly, specifically in psychiatric services for patients. Sports is a little bit of a island, so we need to build up these resources on campus to give our students the resources they need. And obviously, in therapeutic environments, that our psychologists and social workers are providing. Beyond this doors campus, we've added staff at each of the regional campuses so we can develop a case management module for all of those students there.
So these are licensed social workers?
These are licensed social workers who are working with students to do triage, risk mitigation, referral into the broader community. We do have a wealth of resources in more urban populations, we're making developed referral networks with providers, and also wellness education and engagement with our student bodies. We're very thankful to have been able to expand that resource, specifically the regional population. This is how we want to think about mental health at UConn. Now, over on what is my right, you'll see severe persistent impairment, those are the students we're worried about, right? Those are the students who we view as being at a risk to harm either to themselves, which is predominantly the case, or to others because of their illness. We want to be able to respond immediately to those cases. We want to work comprehensively with those students in risk mitigation plans, and we want those students to be successful at UConn. So one of the narratives I like to challenge is we're retaining students with mental health and illness who are at a point of concern for us, but with significant intervention and support from the university, those students are becoming successful graduates in the University of Connecticut. But that, these are core, that is not. Thank you.
Mr. Tom, thank you.
You know, I do, as a New Yorker, it's a term for me, because I would like to think I'm loud enough regardless, but, but that is our core, right? Those areas that scare us perhaps, that make me up at night, that's why the phone is by my bed. But when we move into 32,000, and enabling students to have the tools to be successful and to cope with the stress of life, to have a student not feel alone and unsupported, we start moving into what you will see is overall well-being strategies. So that's providing a counseling module that allows our students to engage with us at any time if they want. Any student can walk into counseling and mental health services and receive contact engagement from our staff. But beyond that, we're seeing the benefit of including yoga in student life, of working in meditation retreats where we have them put down the cell phones, look at each other, reflect, engage, and allow for a healthy emotional engagement with the stress that they face every day. This is our outlook, that is our pivot point. We don't just want to be a place that puts out fires, we want to be a place that enables our students to be successful with the stress of life. And I want to end by reviewing our commitments and how they've been made apparent in the last few years. First, we're incredibly fortunate to have a president who sees this as an institutional priority. In 2017, we hosted a symposium on mental health for university leaders across the region, which was very well-attended and continued to inspire conversation from our counseling mental health teams, but into the world of university leadership, which is a significant point that we've been leading on at UConn and that other universities, and again, I believe are hearing that call as well. We have started through Suzanne's leadership, a coalition that focuses on alcohol and other drugs, that's what ART is, if you'd like to know the link up. But what that has said to us in engaging with all of our academic deans and hearing from our faculty partners is that alcohol and other drugs, and students' use of substance, and why this matters is students' use of substance is a means of coping with pressure. And we want to look at that and understand that from all perspectives at the university. We have built this coalition that has campus-wide engagement in order to do that. We have learned from our faculty, leaders, and deans what they are seeing in the classroom, and it quickly expands into a conversation about mental health and wellness for our students. And that coalition on alcohol and other drugs will expand after we host our annual conference later in the spring to be a coalition of wellness, which is clearly the need that we're hearing from our colleagues across the campus. And then I think our student government is sleeping right now to the shame of the Stanford students, and sorry we're not here. But our student government leadership came forward this year and has a campaign platform said mental health and wellness was critically important to the university's back. Pass back the... Yes, QST. And they sit that with their own voices. This wasn't, you know, my staff reaching out to them and saying, "I need this to be your initiative." This has so clearly become our initiative, with our students coming forward and saying how critically important it is to them, that they see this as necessary for their success. And of course, agreeing with that, given what we know is professionalism, what we see on the national landscape. That has led to partnership between student government leadership and my colleagues in student health services, counseling and mental health services, and wellness and prevention, where we will be pursuing accreditation with the JED Foundation. You may know that organization is one of the leading suicide prevention programs in the country, the state town family was touched by suicide, and has expanded into a wellness initiative. And so our programs will be reviewed by them, and we will be seeking accreditation. And we do this in full partnership with student government, which I think was striking to them, and to JED is an unusual approach in terms of the equal partnership that we're pursuing this with. But it won't be done if it's top-down, and it won't be fully done if it's bottom-up. So we're doing this together. And then I mentioned the transformation of the coalition, and our commitments of student wellness has been more than the three thousand that we serve in counseling and mental health, and instead reflects above the thirty-two thousand who are our student body at UConn. And I just close with this image. This is, you know, a favorite program of all of ours. This is a yoga retreat that we do on Course Barn Hill at sunset. We used to do it at sunrise, so it was a little early. Seven hundred students participating in this event. So it is hard for me to imagine a world in which everyone in this room has not at some point loved someone who has been touched by mental health or illness, the challenges that come with that. We know that we can clinically care for our most ill, but what we really know is we need to change and create a culture of wellness among our students. And clearly, we're on to something if they're all showing up at Course Barn Hill to engage in sunset yoga with us. We will keep doing this good work. I have the most amazing team of professionals that I've worked with, and Dr. Unrato and Cracker were here with me to answer questions about our practice. But please note how much we support your leadership and support of our program. Thank you.
So, Kelly, I have a question.
Yes?
I understand you're focused on cultural wellness, and I understand how important that is, but you also have another priority, which is identifying, attracting students from major services.
Yes.
How do you do that?
So, we have a campus-wide curriculum that's called UConn Helps, and it's, we roll that out to RAs, peer mentors, faculty, staff, advisors. It's a training, two-and-a-half-hour training where you can learn to identify risk and warning signs, and we've trained thousands of people across the campus. We've had this curriculum in place, this current one for two years, the previous one for the past seven years. And what we see as a result of that is, of course, more students being identified to cover the crisis assessment, referral, and care. So the program's working in terms of us being able to catch them wide enough and get people to care for the needs of those students as a national model.
And then I would say we're also starting to look at population health management. So we have a lot of information about our students before they can get here. So we're trying to get a sense of how is that changing, what are those sub-populations, and is there anything that it can do in a protective way that can get to them and just seamlessly allow for the transition to happen in a way where we support them and teach them how to kind of move forward. So there's a lot of information that we collect, this is what's happening in healthcare nationally. And so we're really moving towards trying to correct, what are those variables that we have information on that we can get to even before the crisis, so that will continue in.
It's a great, there's a lot of work to do as faculty, because, okay, now I'm just big as a college professor that I am, always have been. Is the faculty or not good at this? And I can't tell you how many times as a faculty member for all my years, I've thought, you know, that's true, they just, you know, there's something off with them, or they have to show it up. You know, we don't always pick up the phone and call who we're supposed to call. We don't know how to deal with it, we're afraid of it. So students, especially who aren't in residence halls, they do have to go to class. So the residence halls, at least the RAs there, but if we can train our faculty to be better at this and not afraid of it without becoming therapists or psychologists, I mean, that's not, you know, not what we're able to do, but we can be better identifiers.
And I think it's so important to call attention to how much the faculty means to our students. And when I'm doing faculty training, having these lines, you know, I'll often say to them, and I could say to all of you, you know, when you go to your college reunion, who are you looking for? It's not me, it's not the student's students. And I'm okay with that. It is that faculty member in your life who touched you, and you felt a good relationship with them, they mentor, and are able to, to think more broadly about this specific area. But we can't assume that, you know, our physics professors know how to aid a student in a way that isn't just a quick crisis assessment. And so that's been an area, you know, yesterday I had a meeting with a number of faculty who, without a student, we care deeply about and want to support their success. And the faculty helped along until we were in that conversation, talking collectively about how to support their students. So, you know, Nathan and I discussed this yesterday. I think we will be going to academic homes for students around campus, opening up some lines of conversation there. Another area that you mentioned before that you all worked with is our athletic coaches as well, because they're another entity that works one-on-one with students and have seen the rises of those numbers that you reflected in your presentation. And we have unique therapists who work with athletics and support them because that is so clear there. Thank you.
And the statistics that you, that you put up on the screen are here, what are your percentages of students who have, I guess, one of those or another? Do you feel you're reaching the population you need to reach?
I think by transitioning to, you know, one of the reasons why I thought it was so important to bring Suzanne on board, she's in her second year now, or third, is the public health approach, that we transition or broaden our engagement that way. And so that means training three hundred RAs to make sure they're aware of that, means me reaching out to the faculty and working on how we can support and identify students who may be at risk. The coalition work that we can do in the last, that is how we are pivoting to a broader perspective, so we can hit that, you know, seventy-three percent feeling overwhelmed.
I have a good question. Did we extend this program, and this is true, that is work, do we extend this to graduate students? Because I assume that the population just isn't stopped with undergraduates. Then do we extend this to our faculty? If this is important, yeah. Well, no.
Trozos, that's your...
Okay, back to the graduate students. Do we extend this to graduate students?
This is, I'd say retired, is what I'm hearing right now. This is, this is right now, our specialty students. And so I speak with the confidence of knowing student emotional development, you know, some proficiency in the neuroscience and understanding of what we're working with, specifically with students. So that knowledge and the competence does exist for us in the faculty room. The need could very well be there. And I know Scott has mentioned that others, about how do we support faculty's wellness, and that's, that's on his mind, but the commitment is to students.
But with students, so, you know, you guys spent a lot of time, we did over these years, trying to figure out how to build that beautiful rec center.
Yeah.
Who's going to open this summer, closely connected to what these ladies work on every day. So you're seeing the cheap version of physical moments here at the, you know, Course Barn Hill, but one of the main reasons, at least, that I wanted us to build this rec center was because body and mind are connected so closely. So that's something to look forward to.
And that is very much the architecture and design.
Do you observe that mental health problems are more acute in certain segments of undergraduate population than others, meaning certain majors, engineering, pre-med? I would think student athletes, you know, it's not pressure being a college student, and then you're being brought in to also perform in extraordinarily high-level, balanced studies and all of that. I'm just curious if you're seeing a sort of more acutely a problem in some segments of the UConn student body than others?
All of her mind thoughts, that is a combination of research and observation, because they don't always align. And then I'd love to touch on practice spots as well. I think we need, so the observation is, I am very careful to challenge assumptions about specific academic disciplines or behaviors that may put students more at risk, because I find more often than not, it's not true. I do know as a core principle, regardless of how stressed that student member may be due to academic expectation or extracurricular involvement, if I, there is no such thing as two-year-old students, but if I had one who was disconnected, meaning they're in the room studying all the time, been going to the library, no friends, no involvement, and the same academic profile, but deeply connected, so has a good friendship circle, is sleeping, is eating, is exercising, I put a lot more confidence in the second student that they will be successful. Those to me are my driving factors, and when I'm, you know, engaging students, worrying about students, I'm looking for points of connection. I would say a secondary to that is, you know, are you in that very regular extracurricular environment? We've certainly found a need to support athletics more, just to use the format. Are you in particular academic programs that I know are scholastic students? Those things are all true, but to me, the driving interest is how connected is that student, and are they taking care of themselves? So it's not a, you know, I shared this with President Hertz, you know, it's not an uncommon question when a student's in my office, you know, "Did you eat? Did you sleep?" I don't often get a good answer to those questions. I think the stress is driving how they feel that day. But I don't know if that's you, if you don't ever...
You know, one thing that's true about who states counseling and mental health is most optimal students who are willing to come and seek it. And so it's very, it's across the board in the majors, when we do serve quite a number of graduate students, the issues that they bring are probably different than the rich undergrads are. The issues that athletes bring are a little different than the non-athletes. So that's why we have folks that specialize in those various areas, and have specific groups for graduate students. But we're not seeing a clear pattern across, like, oh, this department, that's where we have problems.
And I will say that we are trying to look at that much more specifically. We have data on people, as Menz said, who come to services, but that's a biased data set. And then we have student responses, then we could add questions that connect to majors and things like that. So we do look at other demographics, like, like race and sex and class and things like that. But we've been meeting with academic deans to just get a sense from their perspective, ad hoc, with a lot of information, what are they seeing? And is there anything in common in best practice that we could share across the different disciplines? Or do we really need to look at some of them uniquely? But it really, you know, it's, we're trying to get to it, really.
Can I just say, I want to thank President Hertz for her incredible support and enlightening all of us. We have student affairs committee that have the honor of hearing the great work that Kelly and Dr. Unrato and Dr. Cracker are doing, and the data that they have, international leaders, and actually, right, are collecting and sharing with other schools that are looking to do the same thing, that wellness coalition, that wellness student being ahead of it, is critical to the success of all of our students. So I just want to say again, thank you for your tremendous work, and thank you for the investment and recognition that the president has shown in our leadership. Big pleasure.
I couldn't have any more questions. So really fantastic work. I'm a huge fan. I know the rest of the student government has too. To the end of, I know there were questions raised about stigma. That's kind of next, student government has to listen, building a new look at how to reduce stigma when it comes to mental health, you know, getting help. And, you know, hopefully we'll see some parting with that in the future. And then some questions about mental health and wellbeing, and how we're implementing strategies to come more better than at regional campuses. What is our kind of service offering, if you will, and how are we working to improve that at our regional campuses?
So the model that we follow for regional system case management system that we've implemented in the last two years, that means there is an individual full-time social worker on all the campuses, right? Social worker, yeah. However, we would call if we would hire a psychologist, someone with a mental health, a licensed mental health practitioner. They are not there to provide continual care to a student. They are there to serve as a confidential resource on the regional campuses, which exists prior to the implementation of the case management program, to be able to assess and understand student mental health needs, to develop a referral network in the community so they could refer students to outstanding providers, but with the student's permission, be in contact and understand the student needs that are emerging through that relationship, and then also to do wellness and health education. And what we're finding is, they're very successful. So, you know, we spoke earlier today about adding more staff to the Stanford module, and certainly for residential campus, and something we want to explore. But I think we're doing it in a job, and to imagine that resource not being there now is something we, we're, I'm glad we can do it. Yeah. Thank you so much. I appreciate the support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Susan, and thank this radio. This was, this was very informative, very important work. So thanks for all, all that you do. Andrea, did you have anything going on today that you're doing?
Just a little bit. We've already voted on our consent agenda and some of the action items, and all of action items, actually. And then Dr. Sally makes a lot of the systems first. It's an updated presentation on the potential plans for Stanford and bringing into the conversations over at the regional campuses as well. I think it's my...
You have your... Ed, Rachel Beerz? Yes, Rachel Beerz, and we're going to be with that this morning. And we prefer one item to cheer them on, to support them, and to get their board in this kind of, we take our presentation, these schedules, that would be great, and questions after. And then I'll ask for motion in a second to approve. Scott, will you take these two, these schedules?
Sure, as a pleasure. Sure, this works. Our place should be our presentation titled FY20 Viset. As it has to help, if you know how to do this, you can get it on those, clear. Each year in the spring, we offer through our approval, a post fees schedule for the following academic years, so we, the fall of nineteen through spring of twenty. This does not include tuition, or we would ruin it more. Those are on a separate schedule, as you know, we do last year, four years. We're currently in year three of the four-year schedule. We had a very good record over the last several years looking at student fees. We've not raised the student fees in five years. We did add a transit fee last year, which was very successful to develop to the minus fee, but we've extended our transit network statewide through the past little bit. And in fact, last year, we offered a comprehensive look at fees and actually eliminated a number of fees. We eliminated major fees and academic materials fees. So across the board, over the last several years, we've reduced costs to students based on their fee bill. This year, again, we've taken a hard look at all of the fees that the university charges, and we have a modest proposal to increase one fee, the general university fee, and a couple of other adjustments to make as well. The general university fee is the university's single consolidating fee that supports all student activities on campus. It includes the career center, off-campus life, including charities for, like, athletics, jorgensen, marching band, the One Card, our student ID card, and student union, and student racket, and athletics. It's a raise, it's about forty million dollars a year. One way to think of the GAF, the general university fee, is it pays for all the things that our students have billed to them that aren't in the classroom. It's sort of all the other college stuff. And we held the line for the last five years, we have not adjusted this, even as costs have increased. University services are provided by university employees, and university employees, as you've heard many times, really carry high-cost costs and rolling, rolling across, across the board. So I think we've done a great job. And I'll credit Michael Gilver, our vice president for student affairs, his team, and the shared governance that we have with the general university fee. This is governed by a committee made up of half students, half legislators, to really, they're almost like the legislature for that revenue source. They allocate money to each of those activities within budget, and they really have done a great job, held the line for the last five years. This year, they are seeking a modest increase, twenty-three dollars per semester, forty-six dollars in total. And now they're paying for, really, two pegs. The first is new smart card technology for our new card office. We want to move student ID card to a RFID smart card, which will provide us with a place in technology to get in and out of our buildings, so that some... latest in technology, both to get in and out of our buildings, so it's a more secure card for access to the two buildings. But also remember that our student ID card also functions as a sort of debit card for many students, so June Husky Bucks program. So we do want to upgrade to the latest technology. And the, the setting thing is pays for is contractual salary increases and benefit increases for the staff, their gain of this source. Given all the pressure that we have on that fund, honestly, twenty-three dollars per semester over the last five years is, is actually a pretty remarkable accomplishment, is to maintain that of very modest increase. While not an increase, we are including this year's fee schedule for the first time, the student recreation center fee. As you know, this is a fee that was approved by the board several years ago with student encouragement and student leaders, student government, capable to support to ask and to support the student rec center and to support a student fee to, to pay for that. The good news is that the rec center is on time and on budget for this one hundred million dollar building, that will be open this summer. On this slide, you can see a summary of all the great facilities that are, that will be in that building. It's funny that we just finished the presentation of all this and we all know the connection between having great wellness opportunities like we'll have in this rec center and wellness on campus. It will be open to faculty and staff and we encourage law, that are working, theory charge department to develop that and wellness program. It will not be free for faculty and staff, which would not be fair for students to pay for, but not at faculty staff. And this, so this will be two hundred fifty dollars per semester, beginning the semester that it opens, so next fall, two hundred fifty dollars per semester for undergraduates at stores and four hundred for graduates out stores. And again, we're not asking for approval for this, we already approved it, but we are reminding the area of student body that this is on the schedule for next fall. We're also including in this package, an increase, a three percent increase to room rates in Stanford. I said earlier, room board is on a separate schedule, it's every four years, but three years ago, when we did move board class, Stanford did not have housing, so it's, it's sort of off cycle and we are, we are normalizing this, or I should say, we're offering the same increase as we put, it was part of our local stores based housing program. This is a, as we've heard already today, very popular housing program in Stanford. In our second year, we will resubscribe, substage, and add to these additional units around town to, to support all of our students. So we, we don't believe that this increase will affect the prepared at all. And then lastly, are what we call academic program fees. There are a number of programs that the university offers principally, professional certificates, master's programs, that will be called entrepreneurial programs. These are programs that are one hundred percent self-employed and that we encourage academic departments to offer evenings, nights, weekends, the sort of classic example would be an executive MBA program. These are priced at market, that is when the business school prices, it's an executive MBA program that looks at other executive MBA programs. They are not subsidized at all by the university, by tuition for undergraduates or by state support. In fact, they tend to be revenue positive to the university. And so this year, these are the programs that have proposed an increase and the administration supports them for your review. Bottom line is that for undergraduates at stores next year, we will be looking at a total cost increase, mandatory fee increase of five hundred dollars to the rec center again, approved a long time ago, at forty-six dollars for the general university fee. And that is how it falls for this year.
And Scotty, the forty-six dollars, one thousand three thirty-four, exactly three and a percent increase over five years.
That's right. We froze that fee five years ago and we've been able to maintain our programs throughout the last five years. Again, it's been, within the broader context, well aware of the risk tuition that we were reporting at that time, and so we've sought to reduce fees when we can, either hold the line or reduce them. Last year, there was an actual decrease in fees as we eliminated program fees and eliminated academic materials fees.
Does that fee go to your mission of the same to, to dental school, medical school, and to graduate students? Is there a?
There's a, there's a substantially lower fee for graduate students. I don't believe the same fee is at the medical school and not the school, looking towards our, our first hearts in the room. I don't think it is. And the, the fee proposal that you see before you is the stores number. We do charge a general university fee for regional students, but I believe it's, I think it's one hundred fourteen dollars a year, it's quite a lot lower. When we think of the, the activities that the GAF supports, like, you know, recreation, marching band, that sort of thing, so those tend to be stores-based programs.
Thank you very much. Grab a motion in a second for the proposed, this year, twenty-two fee schedule.
Okay, if you don't have another couple of questions.
Yeah, we're ahead, we're over to the motions. So I'm moving. Before you, then we were staying through the, okay. Okay, any discussion, questions?
So, rough estimate, it seems like over the course of the fee, about three hundred million dollars will be generated in total, and that's around ten million dollars a year. Where does that money go? How much of it is paid up debt? How much of it is operations? What are we paying for?
This is where the recreation center is. The rec center, the university bars one hundred million dollars to build the rec center at the debt service on that, is about six million dollars a year. The, so the, the fee to support the rec center will pay, will pay back debt over thirty years and will also support operations of the building. There's really two, two elements, operations versus the physical maintenance and operation of the building, which a building of that size is substantial. And we are, important to note, the university will be setting aside a portion of that fee for future maintenance and improvements in the building, so we create what we call a renewal or replacement fund. So the, the student rec center will be taken care of, for its life. We hope to never come back to the board and say, that rec center we built twenty years ago, it's, so we need a new fee, because this is, this is a big self-containment. It's best practice, we're actually pretty proud of the way we set this up from the outset. And then the last piece, of course, is the operation of the building itself, a building of that size and the offerings that will happen in the building, will require our staff or, or, or everything. And so it's a comprehensive fee we pay for.
Okay. Got a, I have a question. So I've been told by USG and the student trustees of the past, that the student government support on, you know, the five hundred dollar fee and the student rec facility was contingent on some governance input on the fee or on the gym, and how it was used, and you can comment on those activities, what they look like?
Sure. I'll, I'll state that there is a rec center committee. Michael Gilbert and his team work with students on that. He can comment on membership, how well, he thinks it's a very active and well-funded committee, so we are, we are committed to student and government on the rec center.
The, the student advisory committee for the UConn rec center was established three years ago with the launch of the new facility. The first activity of engagement for that advisory group was to join us in a series of workshops that envisioned the type of building that we hoped to build and actually helped make choices, program design and features that we would want to include in the facility. So that was a very convenient and engaged experience for the students who were participants three years ago in the committee. There's gameable turnover on the committee, as you can imagine, from graduation and other changes that students experience. The second area that the student advisory committee has been very involved in was several years ago with the review of plans for staffing and programming within the facility. Over the last year, there's been a bit below while instruction has taken place, but now we will go into a more mature cycle and on an annual basis, the committee will convene to consider the budget and the program choices and the activities that are offered in the facility. And this will be a very engaged partnership. Committee has included as many as about a dozen undergraduate and graduate students working together with the staff from UConn Recreation and the convener of that group, Chris, is here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hi, Scott, this is Nancy, I just had a question about the fee for the rec center. So funded currently, it would be four hundred for graduate students and two hundred fifty for undergraduates, so I've had two questions. And one is why it would be a hundred and seventy-five percent of the undergrad costs for graduate students? And then also, if there was a request for an increase to that fee or not?
Sorry, I didn't hear the last part of your question, Sam.
Oh, I'm sorry. The last part of my question was whether or not there was a request for an increase to the original set fee. I didn't catch that.
No, my understanding is this predated lifetime here at UConn was that when the building's first completed many years ago, the administration and students got together and committed to this level of fee, five hundred dollars for grads, four hundred for grads. With it, I think implicit in that is an acknowledgement that graduate students will probably use it a little less, but that we have not sought an increase to that fee. And where would we expect to, this is, this is the fee, it's designed to pay for this building and for the expansion of program in the building, and this, this is not something that we're going to raise since we were in sectors, go.
Yeah, that's, I was here, and we work very closely with graduate students and I honestly, they, you know, they convinced us of this plan and now they're good with it, but yeah, a lot of them leave it unless or not at all.
Is it also the grad students voluntary or mandatory?
Scott, that's it. Grad students can waive completely?
Well, I think, well, grad students don't, the fee is not waived for anybody because...
It's not waived, but it's not mandatory that they should enroll, correct?
No, it is mandatory for all undergraduates and grad students.
All grad students, okay. I thought it was an arguing negotiation.
That's, I will, I'll explain.
Yeah.
So the, the fee, and I think if, I'm understanding your question a little better, Sam, that maybe, because I'll try to answer both at once, which is that the fee is five hundred dollars per year, two hundred fifty per semester for grads, four hundred per year, two hundred per semester for grads. So it's not higher for grads, it's actually lower.
And you're now saying you're claiming this number to be any hundredth in the first time?
Yeah, I just got that, actually. It's, I said, it's, the fee itself is not waived for anyone, because we promised that fee to our bondholders. It's in our, it's a covenant in our adventure to sort of throw something along like a cha-cha, which means we can't break it, we have to charge it. However, for those graduate students who are employees, graduate assistants, teaching assistants, GAs and TAs, and are in the, the union that represents them, in our last round of negotiation, we did negotiate with them not a waiver, but a, of an annual pay increase to them in the amount of the fee. So we charged the four hundred dollars, but we paid the four hundred dollars, not additional pay to, to offset that.
Yeah, we're glad you did that, and that was a bargain, which was, yeah, a good place to correct it. And, yeah, I think that many graduate students that I've talked to, you know, really want to take full use of it, but they're, they're different lifestyles and don't live on campus.
Oh, thank you everyone for that, I, I, thank you.
Amy, I'm Sam.
No, thank you.
Not that, thank you for your questions. Any, any other questions, discussion? All for motion and all in favor of the proposed changes in the fees? Vote aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Okay, the motion passes. The only other piece for the Financial Affairs Committee report would be, we needed a motion in a second to approve the two budgets that were discussed this morning for the Northeast Science Quad, sign improvements, and for the WRT Lot, Electrical Party Restorations. I think everybody heard those this morning. Could have a motion in a second to approve those two budgets. So, thank you. Any discussion, question, others? All in favor, vote aye. What is, this, I'm standing? Nope, okay. Opposed? Thank you, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the Financial Affairs Committee report.
Thank you, Andy. Sandy, you've got a note.
Good morning, Chairman, this is order of the, order of practice is not meant to my last, just report to the trustees, and our board will be needed again on Monday of March fourth, and please mark it for the chairman.
Thank you, Sandy. Dennis, joint audit and compliance.
No report of this board, Eric.
Thank you, Dennis. Tom, BGE.
We'll be meeting at eleven thirty today. What we'll do is, I know some people have also been enlightened, want to be a BGE, but we will not move to executive session until members arrive. Okay, we'll just start with the, the other part of the, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Maybe, nothing we could add, thank you, Sandy. I won't call you right now.
Chair, you have a question?
And our student life committee will try to keep things tight with our meeting right after this, but we are going to, again, I just want to reiterate how grateful I am for the presentation, so you can all hear about the remarkable work that we here in student life committees by them to take care of our students, the whole student. We will be talking about poverty among students as well as Title IX and our...
Thank you, Chairman. For real, that is too much, that's, that's...
Thank you, Chairman, to refer members to attachment fifteen, which is the foundation reports, pretty self-explanatory, and we'll just report that the search for the foundation present continues, we'll have a second round of interviews, sure, with the number of curators.
And you're willing to do that search at this point? Rick, any, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Second round.
Since you're very happy to be on that committee.
The searches are a lot of fun, aren't they?
I'm always happy to be on any committee.
It's an awesome assessment.
Rick, are we, committee had compensation. And he was the chairman of the committee at this morning before this meeting. We have one discussion item, which was in the position of office and proists, the presentation by President Hurst on that. And we have one agenda item, and that is the attachment sixteen, three-day contract extension for President Hurst, and I go Chairman's office, and this is very much, extending for one month, we appreciate that. So I would like to make a motion that for just these extended contracts, President Hurst, as President, we're pretty ready, July thirty-first, it's about nineteen, so we'll move. Thank you, Rick. All, Rick.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Blue Bar Board.
Thank you, Ed.
There will be no executive session, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn, and I also want to ask the next regular meeting for, we have Wednesday, March twenty-seventh. So that motion, Scott, is adjourned. All in favor? All opposed? Great, not, you, you, thank you.